Hey, good evening, everybody. Is Lisa Moore joining, or I thought they were away. Was she joining from Hawaii?
Let me, let me check. My understanding was that, well, let me check for you.
I think she said that she was going to best the June 16th meeting.
Ah, okay.
That was my understanding.
Now that doesn't seem to make, I want to check that as well, because that date seems strange. Maybe it was the 14th, could have been the 14th. Let me look for her email.
I just received an email from Commissioner Savage and he's having some technical difficulty logging in, so we're going to help him. Just give us a few minutes.
Wonderful.
Commissioner Savage has been sent another invite, and just give him a couple of moments and he'll log on.
Send another invite, and just give him a couple of moments and he'll log on.
You know, Carrie, I'm gonna do the same thing. You know, Carrie, I'm gonna do the same thing.
Does this still work?
I can hear you.
In case there's any echo, I'll turn off my side. Yes, the internet for outside. If Khatati is okay, Brittany.
I don't know what's going on.
I can hear Lisa.
I can hear you guys too.
I can see Lisa coming on, but no picture. Hey, there's, there's Lisa.
Vice Chair Hancock, we do have a quorum if you wanted to start the meeting, and we'll make sure we get Commissioner Savage set up.
Okay, is he, is he close, or?
I sent him an inquiry through email and have not heard back yet, but I'll stay, address it when he emails back.
Have we got Lisa still on? Lisa, looks like she's on. Lisa, would you be ready to start the meeting, or should we wait? I think we should wait, or we have to wait now if Lisa's not, not there.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, Lisa, yes.
Okay, sorry, my computer, I don't know if it's my computer or it's in here, but wow.
Wow, sometimes it takes some time. So, are you ready to start?
Yes, I am, yes.
Okay, and then as John can join in, which will be a little bit, I guess, hopefully, he is trying to log in. But let's call the meeting to order at 6:08, 6:07. Can we do a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Moore?
Here.
Commissioner Savage? Vice Chair Hancock?
Here.
And we are showing Chair Lemus' absent this evening.
Okay, good, so if we can go on to, I guess, there's approval of AB 361, who leads that?
Kevin and Carrie, I was gonna have you lead that, as you're most familiar with that item.
Yes, thank you, Noah. So, AB 361 would normally be passed by the City Council, covering all boards and commissions. However, the City Council meeting was canceled last week due to technical issues, so in order to continue operating with virtual meetings under AB 361, it does need to be passed every 30 days, and so we felt it was best to have the Planning Commission pass this tonight, so that we can continue to have this meeting virtually.
I, I am getting informa-, I am getting information that the website link is not working for other people, but I think if we continue at the moment, is that something that is being worked on? I think Kevin is the best person.
Which link are you referring to? We have it up on our side.
Okay, it should be working. Okay, sorry about that. If you could continue with the AB 361.
That's really the end of the presentation. This is something that all council and commission meetings have been operating under for the past couple of years. It just needs to be renewed every 30 days, and normally that would have been done by the council last week, although the meeting was canceled, so it needs to be done tonight, so that this meeting can continue virtually.
So Vice Chair Hancock, we're just looking for the Commission to pass a resolution implementing the AB 361 teleconferencing rules, and if the Commission chooses to vote on it, then we can proceed with the meeting.
So if I open it up for the other Commissioners to give their thoughts on it, or somebody to make a motion?
I will make a motion for the approval of AB 361 to continue teleconferencing.
I'll second, but do we need to open this up for public comment?
Yes, I can open it up. It would probably be a good idea. So, but generally, we're in favor of it, and I'll open it up for public comment. Does anybody want to speak to it? Is there any public comment?
There's no public comment.
So, I'll close public comment, and we have a motion and a second. Can we vote on it?
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage, he's not on yet. Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
And I'm told that Commissioner Savage is now available. Were you able to listen to Item C, the approval of AB 361? You're muted. Commissioner Savage, go ahead and unmute.
Commissioner Savage, I'm seeing you as unmuted on my side, but we still are not hearing you. Say, in this instance, he could vote with a thumbs up?
I'm not seeing him on the pictures yet. Yeah, there we are. I've seen Commissioner Savage. If you want to, would you, do you want to vote on AB 361 with your thumbs? Are you hearing us at all, Commissioner Savage? I am also getting a report that somebody else is not able to join the meeting.
All right, Vice Chair Hancock, I think it's appropriate to move on. I can't tell that Commissioner Savage can hear us, so I'll send him a message and let him know, but we do have a quorum.
Okay, I accept that. If everybody else is, are we all happy to move on? Okay, so if we can move on to Item D, approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May-
Can I first of all call if anybody's actually got any additions, and I do have one addition that I'd like to make. So I'd like to make addition to the minutes that the city will take over responsibility for the maintenance of the community parking area. That was a comment that I made. If that could be added to the minutes?
I will make the change.
And then, okay, and if I can call then for, for them to be approved, or a second, a motion and a second?
I move to approve the minutes of May 2nd, 2022 with the added comment from Vice Chair Hancock.
I will second.
Thank you. If we could have a roll call?
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
I'm staying.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Thank you.
We got John on, great.
Yeah, sorry about that, folks. I just got in, so.
No problem, welcome.
Thank you.
So are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Vice Chair Hancock.
So for oral, the public has asked to please step to the podium or raise their hand and state your name and address for the record. If anybody would like to make a comment on something that isn't on the agenda right now. Is there any public comment?
To our attendees tonight, please use the raised hand icon to speak, or if you're dialing in, use star nine. That will end public comment.
So if we could go to matters at hand, the Killville Hillside Development Permit and Lot Line Adjustment.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Carrie, I'll have you bring up the presentation. While we wait for the presentation to come up, I will just identify that Mr. Kelville, Kelville, the property owner, as well as his representatives, Demay Rubens and Duncan Young, are here to present after I give a brief presentation. They'll be available to answer any specific questions, and we'll get going. So this-
Can I actually ask, I've had two inputs from people who want to join, and they've not been able to. Who's the best person for them to talk to?
Kevin Patterson and Carrie Bohon are the folks who are running the meeting electronically. Can you- Can you provide a little bit more information as to how they are trying to access the meeting?
Um, I just know that Woody Hastings and Jenny Blaker um have contacted me. Jenny's, of course, in another room in the house. Um, and said that they can't, they can't, they can't log in. I do see Lorie Anne Barber has logged in.
I have Kevin Patterson, I have Kevin Patterson in the um audio room working on that right now.
Okay, so we have two P, we have that. Um. Have we got all the people that we need for the West School Street Hillside, all the stakeholders?
We do, to my knowledge. That's, yes, we do, sir.
Should we continue, um commissioners?
Are, are you asking us if we can continue the meeting?
Yeah, if we should continue at this stage, or should we hold off? I think we should continue with the stakeholders for the School Street Hillside lot.
I'm comfortable with that. Yeah.
Okay. Um, let's, let's continue, but if we haven't got people, if we haven't got access by the, the next item, I think we'll have to review where we're at with it.
And I'm, I'm sending uh uh Ms. Blaker and um the Congas folks, Mr. Hastings, uh direct, I'm sending their address to Kevin, their email address to Kevin and Carrie in the hopes that they could send them a direct um link to hopefully get into the meeting. So we'll see, but. Getting back to six six six, West School Street, uh as identified-
I'm sorry Noah, I'm sorry to interrupt you. If I could just address the uh, the link issue for a moment. Um, so we have got word that the uh, the link in the agenda is not operating. Uh, but there is on the agenda packet, there is the webinar ID and the passcode listed. So anybody that would like to join the Zoom meeting can go to the zoom.us and click join a webinar, and the webinar ID and the passcode are in the agenda. I can read them out now, um in case anybody would like to write them down if they aren't able to view them.
Kevin, perhaps you could send an email to the, to the, all the folks copied on the item I just sent to you and Carrie?
Yes.
Those are the folks who indicated they are interested in the next item. And I'm just worried in case they may not even be able to see this, they wouldn't hear you.
Understood, will do. Thank you.
Just give me a couple of minutes for the Vice Chair to- So there should be a direct invite being sent out to the folks who have commented on the next item. And we can't hear you, Vice Chair.
Thank you. I uh, I can see Woody Hastings joining.
Excellent, okay. Uh, so getting on to uh the hillside development and lotlet adjustment project before the commission, uh currently, this is uh located at six 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 West School Street. And we'll go to the next slide. Uh, the item before the commission as identified is consideration of a resolution approving a hillside development permit and lotline adjustment. And this, if approved, will allow the construction of a five hundred square foot, single-family home addition and about a thirteen hundred and fifty square foot detached garage on slopes over ten percent on a four and a half acre parcel at six 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 West School Street in the Rural Residential Zoning District. Um, and as identified in the staff report, this project was originally motivated by code enforcement activity with the city. And if approved, this would allow the project to move towards resolving the code enforcement case. We'll go to the next slide. So six 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 West School Street, as identified, is in the Rural Residential Zoning and General Plan Designation. And Carrie, if you advance one, the slide one more time, uh it's located there as identified uh with the red star. It's about a four and a half acre parcel uh on the southern edge of the city, just outside uh, or just to the south of this property is the county jurisdiction. We'll go to the next slide. Um, some background on the site, in January of twenty twenty-one, um, city staff inspected the property in response to a complaint. The inspection did identify the substantial amount of improvements have been made to the property without the benefit of a permit. Uh, February through April of that year, staff worked with the applicants to identify the appropriate uh applications to file uh in order to legitimize that onsite construction. Um, and that did result in the filing of a hillside development permit, a lotline adjustment, and a building permit. It was somewhat complicated uh given that some of the projects, namely the, so the accessory dwelling unit is not subject to planning approval. It's allowed to go straight to building permits. Uh, however, portions of the development are subject to the hillside development and lotline adjustment regulations. Um, on May twenty-fourth, those applications were filed, and just after that, we had scheduled an administrative hearing to formalize our enforcement efforts with uh property owner, uh and the owner did attend that meeting. Um, and uh, separate from uh the review of the planning commission, but it is worth noting, the owner has been very responsive and has paid a substantial fee in response to these activities. Uh, and then we'll move on, just uh most recently, after the project was scheduled for planning commission consideration, two letters from neighboring property owners were received by the city in support of the request. One uh came in as a part of the original project application, I'm sorry, the, the planning commission packet. And a second letter came in after the packet was published. And both of those have been provided to the planning commission. Go to the next slide. Uh, this is an aerial photograph of the property. And then if you uh advance it one more time, Carrie, it'll highlight. So that's the area of this parcel that we're talking about. It's accessed via West School Street from a long driveway, and it is uh substantial slope, but once you get to the top of the site, it does level out. Uh, then you go to the next slide, Carrie. And this is just to zoom in on that same aerial photograph. And so at the top left of that photograph, that's the garage structure you can see. Uh, and then the bottom left, the kind of highlighted, uh, you can see the, basically the top of the retaining wall. So it's the gray kind of very distinct lines in an L shape. And then the roof and the bottom right, or I'm sorry, bottom left corner is the roof of both the addition and the ADU. They're essentially one structure, uh but only the addition and the garage and the uh retaining walls are under the hillside development uh purview. We go to the next slide. So this is a, a, from your project packet, and it's just intended to kind of highlight the improvements uh on the project plans. And so if you click the, advance one more time, Carrie, the dark gray there is the single-family home addition. You go one more time, Carrie. That's the garage structure itself. Again, select uh or advance the slides. That red line identifies the proposed new location of the lotline adjust, or the lotline. So a portion of the property line is be, is proposed to be modified uh to accommodate the hillside development setbacks because the garage was constructed in, in the setbacks originally. And then one more time, Carrie, that's the location of those retaining walls, which we saw in the aerial photograph. And then one more time, and that is the approximate location of the uh accessory dwelling unit. It's actually a little large, uh it's more of a square shape, but that again is not subject to the purview of the planning commission. But again, just trying to provide some context for what is before the commission and what's being proposed. So if you go to the next slide. So as identified, this property is located in the city's Rural Residential General Plan Designation and Zoning District. Uh, there's a number of general plan policies identified in the staff report pertaining to hillside development. Uh, namely, the goal is to essentially protect the ridge lines of the city, uh prohibit, prohibit unnecessary grading activities, uh preserve and protect prominent views and scenic resources, uh maintain hillsides of slopes over fifteen percent um and prohibit development on hillsides over fifteen percent. And then require the structures on these new developments or these, these sloped areas that are allowed to step with the site. And as identified in the staff report, uh packet page fourteen, staff essentially has uh found that the project, the planning commission can find uh and support this, the project has been in keeping with these general plan policies. And so getting onto the zoning code, um, the Rural Residential Zoning District implements the Rural Residential General Plan Designation. And then uh, although the Rural Residential Zoning District has a set of standards for development criteria, those are superseded by the hillside development regulations, which are more strict. Um, so anytime someone wants to develop on a slope over ten percent in Kattati, they're subject to the hillside development regulations. There's not a lot of sloping land in, in Kattati, but um, this is one of the sites. Uh, Kessing Ranch was one of those sites as well, and, and also retained or received a hillside development permit as a part of that approval. Uh, similar to the general plan, the zoning goals are intended to preserve the city's uh hillside scenic resources, prevent environmental degradation, uh encourage grading practices that are appropriate on hillside areas. Uh, and there's a whole section of the zoning code designated to uh this process and these regulations, and that's seventeen fifty-three zero five zero. Um, and it talks about how each structure must be located on the most accessible, least visually prominent portion of properties. Uh, most geological state, geologically stable, um uh and built at the lowest feasible elevation. And aligned with the natural contours. And so there's uh multiple sections uh in the code, um in chapter seventeen point five three, identifying how this should be done. Uh, there's site coverage limits, there's setback uh requirements that are more stringent than the typical zoning designation. Um, specific criteria about the placement of structures can be identified in um figure five dash seven. Um, five dash eight, five dash nine, and five ten, and eleven are all kind of examples on how hillside development should be done in Kattati. And then chapter or section or figure, sorry, five dash thirteen talks about how to do retaining walls. And then the maximum height of retaining walls that's allowed in hillside development areas is three feet. Um, and so as identified in the staff report, uh all the proposed designs uh do meet these criteria. The addition to the single-family home is on a flat existing area of the, of the site. The garage, although that's located on a slope, it's less than fifteen percent. Uh, and the Garage Foundation does step with the site as intended with the zoning code. Um, and so the primary kind of issues with this site are uh the fact that the garage location does not meet the hillside development um setbacks. However, the applicant was able to work with their neighboring property owner and, and negotiate with them on a way to adjust the property line, which would meet the setbacks if approved. Uh, and then it's worth noting that the applicant will have to uh modify the retaining walls to reduce their height, but they have agreed to do that if approved by, through this process. Um, and then uh, the lotline adjustment process is typically similar to a building permit. It's slightly different, but similar in that it's, if the applicant meets the criteria, it's just approved. So there's not a lot of discretion there. Um, the proposed new lotline would not um violate any of the zoning standards. It is uh permissible. Uh, and the code does talk about um additions to single-family homes as typically a, a director level decision for hillside developments. However, the amount of square footage being constructed and the complexity of the project uh motivated staff to elevate this project decision to the planning commission, which is how we're here. Uh, and then the project does meet the criteria for residential infill exemption under CEQA. And so uh with that, we have two comment letters in support. Uh, staff has worked with the applicant and has been very responsive to address the uh issues that were created by the proposed development. And so given that, we'll go to the next slide. And staff is recommending that the planning commission review the hillside development permit, lotline adjustment, staff report all the analysis, and vote to approve or deny the request for hillside development permit and lotline adjustment uh to allow the construction of the single-family home and the new detached garage in addition to those retaining walls uh in the Rural Residential Zoning District at six 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 West School Street. That concludes my presentation. The applicant team is here. Uh, I think they have a few words to say, and then we're both going to be available for any questions.
Thank you, Noah. Perhaps I could open it up to um the um, the commission first, and then we'll go to public input. So if anybody's, Lisa Moore, um, Commissioner Moore?
Yes, I just had a quick question um for Noah. So is this an ADU or is it a single-family home addition to, the addition is an ADU?
Uh, it's both. So there was the existing single-family home. Um, they built an ADU without a permit. In looking at how to best address all of these needs, they are, are all the requirements and limitations. They are also proposing an addition to the single-family home. The ADU is allowed by right. They're just allowed to get a building permit to build that. It's not subject to hillside development regulations under the state law. However, the addition to the single-family home is, and then there's the issue of the garage and the retaining walls, which are also subject to the hillside development permit.
So they want, they've built an ADU and then they want to do an additional uh, uh, single-family home?
Uh, it's an addition to the, it's extra square footage being added to the existing home. And, and the, the reason is essentially the ADU that was built is too large to meet the city's regulations. So they're separating a part of the ADU and attaching it to the house to allow that to be legalized, should the commission choose to approve it.
And just one other question. So when all this was being done, there was no permits pulled at all?
Not at all.
Okay, and how long was this, was this going on before, I mean, when did the complaint come in?
Uh, January of last year, and we got there and there's a, a lot of, I mean, the ADU was essentially built, uh not sited, but it had a roof on it, has walls, has wiring, but there's no siding, there's no interior finishes at all. And the garage was just framing, essentially stick framing.
Okay. And so the garage hasn't been built, they've stopped, there was a red tag on there.
Uh, yeah, they stopped all construction once we got involved. They have not done any construction since January of last year. Um, and, and Mr. Kevill has, I think, probably some information to share or his team, but all construction stopped. And as I, as I indicated, they have been very responsive uh to the, to the demands of the city, for lack of a better term.
All right, thank you for that little history.
Any other comments from commissioners or questions for staff? So I, I've just got a quick uh, or question. Um, I was a little bit confused. I think, I mean, you've, you've identified some of it. The ADU is reported as being under five hundred square feet, but then what is the extension? And particularly, how does that affect what the fire district or um Rancho Adobe is saying?
Yeah, so it's the other way. The addition or the extension, as you called it, is the under five hundred square feet. The addition would then, or I'm sorry, the ADU would then be about eleven and a half hundred square feet. So the maximum size of any ADU in the city is twelve hundred square feet. And so because the structure was bigger than that, the applicants are proposing to separate it, make part of it attached to the home as an addition to their existing home, and then the remaining portion to be an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, Rancho Adobe has reviewed it. They're fine uh with the requirements. Um, the applicants, it's, there's a chance they're gonna have to sprinkle it, um but that'll be determined. Should it be approved by the planning commission, and they move on to the building permit.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so I will open it up to public comment with the owner um coming through first, or the owner's applicant.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Demay Rubens of Summit Engineering. Uh, the address, in case you need it, is four, four six three Aviation Boulevard, Suite two hundred in Santa Rosa, California. Um, I just first wanted to start off with thank you to Noah and Star working diligently with us to ensure that we were addressing all the concerns of the city and coming up with an approach that is uh meeting the requirements of the city code. Um, we are here to answer questions. Duncan Young is the architect for the project. Uh, Summit Engineering did the civil engineering work, so we are here to answer questions. Um, I did know uh Steve had a few words that he would like to say, and then from there we'll just, uh, I think that Noah did such a great job in presenting. You didn't have anything to add other than if questions come up. Steve, I'll let you.
See if I can get this unmuted. Can you hear me? Okay, so first of all, I, I'd like to apologize for starting this project and creating this nightmare for everybody. Um, my intentions were totally good, and uh if I explain them, maybe it'll help. I have an, a couple of in-laws who live here who are in their late eighties. Uh, they're, they live on the east coast, but because of COVID, they were stranded here in two thousand and twenty. Um, while they were here, one developed a severe um handicap and was wheelchair-bound. The other one this uh, has um serious uh issues with mobility. So basically, they became our permanent house guests. And I was trying to develop some room for them. And I also have a son and daughter-in-law who were in the midst of having a baby who needed um space as well. So our three-bedroom home wasn't enough to accommodate six, seven people. So there was, that was the reason for the addition um and the ADU. It's not for income or anything like that, it's strictly to keep my family here in California. We've been at this property as a family for fifty years. I think I've been a good person in the community all those years, I know my folks were. And with people out of work during COVID, it just seemed like the best and quickest way to get things done, I have tried, and I told Noah in the past. On two separate occasions to get to find out just what I needed for. Permits, and at one point I was told by a gal in the office that, and this was, this goes back a few years, but I was told that my. Horse shade structures would need sprinkler systems in them, and they're literally like twelve by fourteen. Shade structures, four posts in the ground with a with a roof over them. So I knew that wasn't really gonna be very, the quick process is done. So that's that's the reason for the need for this space, that was the need for the hasty design, I will say this, I. Only employed the people who I knew were very good at their job, I've been around a long time, I know a lot of people in the trades and. What they have done for building, we made sure it was to or beyond code. With the exception of the hillside development, which I did not know anything about. So I have. And I do apologize for the permit process, I've learned a very good lesson, I think. And all I can do is apologize for the way it started out, but I'm hoping that it. Ends up positively, I've tried very hard to do everything as requested by Noah and his team. Duncan and Demay have been great help, so. I just hope you can see where it clear to understand my side.
Is there anybody else who would like to make public comment?
To our attendees tonight, please use the raised hand icon to speak, or if you're dialing in, use star nine. Vice Chair Hancock, that will end public comment.
I don't know who was talking about, you were breaking up really bad, I couldn't understand the question.
Can you follow now, okay, it was just really if there was public comment. And there is no more public comment. Does that sound okay? Sounds okay, so I'll bring it back to the commission, and if there's any questions of the. Applicant or anything else that people. Would like to ask. I have one question that's on there, has the other property owner agreed in writing to do the. The lot adjustment, I mean, I guess it's a legal process.
They have, they have, so they're required to sign the lot line adjustment application to indicate their support. And one of the letters that came in in support of the project is from that property owner.
Very good. Commissioner Moore.
I just had a question about, so they're gonna have to move some PG&E lines. So this is predicated on if that PG&E pole and line could be moved?
That's correct, so they also, in addition to the garage structure being too close to the property line, it was also in the location of a PG&E easement. Because there is an onsite power pole. They have approached PG&E about relocating that power pole and and redoing that service, which will also require the modification to the easement. And you're absolutely correct, if the commission approves this. Then the applicant team will have to engage with PG&E further to revise the location of that power pole and easement. I will say, I don't think it's gonna be an insurmountable task, and I know that the applicant team. Duncan and Demay are very familiar with that process, and they've already been engaged with PG&E, they just didn't want to move beyond. This process until they had an answer.
Thank you, Noah.
So one more question maybe to to Steve, does he see that he can meet all the conditions that have been proposed and. Is happy to bring him, bring it all into compliance?
That that is my goal, is to be compliant, I've told Noah that since the first day. And yes, I I intend to do everything in my power to make it happen.
Good, thank you, is there any more comment from the commission, or would anybody like to make a motion?
The resolution.
It's on packet page forty-two, I believe.
I'll make a a motion, a resolution, planning commission of the Katari, City of Katari. Proving a hillside development permit, a lot line adjustment to allow the construction. Of addition to an existing single family home, attached garage at six 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 West School Street in the rural residential zoning.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore, is there anybody else who would like to, another commissioner would like to second it?
I'll second that.
And that was Commissioner Savage, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Savage.
Yep.
Vice Chair Hancock.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much, and we'll move on to the next item. Which is the review of the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Annual and multiple year capital improvement plans for conformity with the general plan.
Okay, Vice Chair and members of the commission, this is, my name is Craig Scott, I'm the Public Works Director and City Engineer. And the city has has annual and multi-year capital plans, which are revised each year. To reflect any changes in the status of the projects, move projects around as priorities and funding dictate. And add new projects. The plans are brought before you. As per section sixty-five four oh one of the government code, planning and zoning law. Requires submittal of capital plans to the planning commission for a finding of conformity with the general plan. During the presentation, please refer to the staff report, especially pages fifty-three through sixty-eight. Which are the annual and multi-year plans and list the proposed projects. An additional document consisting of three pages was provided. Just just a couple hours ago, and I apologize for the late edition of that. But it's a, it's an important document, it's a three-page document that links the projects. With a general plan, goal, objective, or policy that the project, each respective project addresses. The one-year or annual plan will be provided to city council for consideration to appropriate city. Funds in the annual city budget, and the multi-year capital plan is provided as a financial planning tool for future annual budgets. I just want to make the point that no financial. Decision is being asked of the planning commission at this time, it's purely for the conformity. Of the projects to the general plan goals and objectives. The projects are presented in six separate project types or divisions. These are streets, parks, government buildings, water, sewer, and drainage. Drainage has no projects currently in in either the annual or multi-year plan. And that's because we have a track, a draft trash. Implementation plan that was submitted to the regional board, and the board has not adopted, has not approved it yet. So we thought it unwise to move forward with capital spending on projects that. We might have have not been approved, and we would have potentially have to redo them, or they were for naught. Okay, each project has a source document. Which provides the main justification or need for the project. These documents include the water and sewer master plans. Bike pedestrian master plan, the local road safety plan, the park capital plan. The traffic impact fee study and other reports, some of the reports are studies of renewal replacement needs. Of city facilities. So it's a variety of source documents, but they, the justification. For the projects are are in those reports rather than in this listing of the capital projects. All of these. Supporting documents are on the city's website and are referenced for each project in the plan's appendix. So you've got the. The short, rather short, eight to ten-page. Capital plan, and then the appendix has most of the hundred and seventy-six pages. Is is in the appendix, which details out the funding sources and costs, costs. And other information about the projects. And that starts on page sixty-nine of the packet. There are many opportunities for the public to provide input on these projects, whether it's during the preparation of these studies and reports. The local road safety plan, for example, or during public workshops like the ones recently held for Pocket Park Design. Additionally, the city hosts project pages where the public can get up-to-date. Information on active projects, subscribe, get automatic updates and provide city input. The city's budget books and capital plans are also available on the city's website. With in detail information, including the current status provided for active projects being designed or in construction. That's a fairly recent, in the last couple of years, we've, we, the city has put that online. So for the West Side Street project, for example, the project plans are provided in a timeline, including day-to-day. Instruction activities are up there on the website, and anyone from the public. Is welcome to subscribe to those websites, to those projects. That that means that they would get email updates anytime a change was made to those sites. And then also it's a venue for providing the city with comments on those projects. The total capital plan has forty-three projects over five of the six divisions, as we talked about. For a total projected capital cost of over forty million dollars. Briefly, I'm gonna provide highlights of the city's efforts in each of the separate project areas. The main one being streets. Street, the city has been replacing aging and worn-out streets, and this will continue with a transition over the next three to five years. To street preservation rather than rehabilitation methods. After five years, the street in, street index, which is its scorecard, its grading. Of what kind of condition it's in is expected to go from the upper sixties, which it is currently. To the low to mid eighties, which is really good condition. And at that point, we would be able to do the lower-cost. Annual street preservation treatments, and our our annual street budget would drop significantly. Each of these street projects. Are to include bike and pedestrian safety enhancements. That are informed by the bike pen master plan and the recently completed and adopted local road safety plan. In the parks division, we have. In twenty twenty-three, the city expects to construct the Katari Park improvements. Which we hope to put out to bid shortly. And then we hope to design the Platinum Park improvements. For construction in the following years, twenty-three, twenty-four. Other efforts are addressing, are addressing the Veranda Fletti Barnes and the Civic Center. Park design, so the park capital plan. Highlights, capital improvements at the Civic Center complex here at City Hall and the Community Center. And those are split off into, I think, three phases, this one would. Get started on designing the first phase, which is the the ballpark. The the park out back and the basketball and parking in the front. The other, the government building division. We had, the city will be replacing windows at City Hall, and that's an ongoing project, we're on the verge of putting it out to bid for. The south-facing windows, those get the most weather facing West Sierra Avenue. And then there's the other windows to do eventually, and the windows at the community center. And we have a project in the plan for reconfiguring the Civic Center parking lot. The reconfiguration would not only address the degraded parking lot. But also would add some more parking spots. In the water division, the Water Enterprise. Has renewal and replacement needs, which are the Cypress tank, tank recoding and treatment systems. And capacity improvements for fire flow. And these are. That there aren't the tank recoding and treatment systems are more. For the use, tracking the useful life in condition of these systems. And then the Cypress tank and the capacity improvements are informed by the city's water master plan. And then the timing of the the pipelines is to be ahead of the planned street paving projects. We certainly don't want to go through and pave a street and then come back the next year and dig it all up for a pipe pipeline project. And that applies to sewer too, so the next division is sewer. And we're focusing on repairing and replacing aging pipelines, we just did a. A study with infiltration and inflow, where that's coming from, and that involved videotaping the pipelines. And noting the degradation, the the failures in the pipe. And so we have enough information from that one study for the next at least five years. Of just steadily making progress to replace. By sections of damaged pipe. Additionally, in the sewer fund, we've applied recently, the staff has to, for grant funds, emergency grant funds. To provide emergency generators for two of the four lift sewer lift stations. Okay, nearly done here, these these projects advance the city's general plan goals and objectives. Especially if you look, a quick reference to that is on that three-page handout, which was just. Made available this afternoon. And staff's recommendation for this item is to review the annual and multi-year plans. Adopt a resolution finding the proposed plans in conformity with the city's general plan. And refer to the plans to city council for final consideration. That concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to respond to any questions the commission may have.
Yes, thank you, Craig, for that, and I really appreciate the the sitter's a way of looking into the, you know, what the planning of the city does. And it's a public participation, so I really appreciate that you you're putting the effort into that and making it visible and up for a discussion. But boy, it's a lot of work to plow through, and especially having that last update is 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 sort of quite challenging to look at. But I'll open it up to the commission, so Commissioner Murphy.
Thank you, yeah, I just had a couple of follow-up questions. On the additional attachment that was sent today, I'm not sure I quite understood what that was telling us versus what we had in our packets. Do you think you could provide a little bit more explanation?
Certainly, this goes to the crux of the matter for tonight's decision. And in past capital plans, there was a a line item there for the general plan consistency. And it would list the actual policy. And we realized, I realized that this was missing from the, what was in the handout or in the packet. And so. They've always been, the projects have been associated with these, they just weren't printed out, we we did not, I, you know, I'm held responsible for this, I. I didn't put that section in the printout. So it's a, it is a lot to digest, it turns out, there's twelve goals and policies of the general plan. That are. It turns out there's twelve goals and policies of the general plan that are in here. And, um, there's, there's, I think, three that apply to street projects, and then one each for each of the other divisions. So it looks like a lot of different goals and objectives, but it boils down to really twelve specific areas.
Got it. Thank you. That's very helpful and not to worry at all. That makes perfect sense. Um, that's actually a perfect segue into my second question, which was, I noticed that the first item in the attachment, the additional information for capital project item, the request title is Streetscape Refurbishment. Um, and I just, I, this may have just been an error, but I wanted to double-check in case I'm missing something. But all the other items said the project is consistent with the general plan, um, community circular to, uh, sorry, circulation objective, and then it would give the number. And that first one was the only one that didn't say that. So should we be looking at that one separately because it's not, we can't actually tie it to the general plan?
Yeah, it's, uh, that one actually has a pretty simple explanation and it's, it's, it's a, um, a printing error. It's Altman Acres Streetscape Refurbishment. So it's, it's, uh, twenty or thirty thousand dollars to refurbish the streetscape that's in the Landscape and Lighting Assessment District. This is the first year we're adding Assessment District capital projects to the capital plan, just to be more comprehensive. And unfortunately, Altman Acres, those two words were dropped out of the printout. So it might make more sense if, um, with that, knowing that, because, to tie it to the general plan, uh, uh, policy LU two, which was a land use goal of, um, enhancing, uh, the, the quality of life of Catati residents through the creation and maintenance of well-designed and appropriately served neighborhoods. And in policy two point six, in there, it talks about well-maintained streetscapes. So that was the linkage.
Great. Got it. Yeah, I, I felt like everything we reviewed here, we talked about at some point over the past year or two. So that's exciting to see that we're still on track. Um, and then my last question was, in regard to the park and ride, um, line item, which I believe is listed five or six down, park and ride replacement project for twenty twenty-three. Is, is that something that, is that still consistent and on track with what was discussed two to three years ago, where it would be getting sold, a section of that would be sold and then used for a hotel development?
That, that's correct. So the city, four years ago, five years ago, entered into an agreement with Caltrans to purchase the park and ride lot on Saint Joseph's Way. And the plan has, it's just very slow-moving is all. We, the, the city's been working with Caltrans to get an encroachment permit at the Petaluma and Windsor Airport sites, where we're going to, um, instruct replacement, uh, parking spots. And then, uh, with the hotel purchase of that property, we would take that, pro, those proceeds to do the construction. We, once we sign, um, the encroachment permit, we'd have two years to get those replacement spots constructed. And then we'd have thirty spots at the park and ride here, um, which would be a, the parking lot for the hotel, still reserved for park and ride, um, purposes.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Those were all my questions.
Any other commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Moore?
I just had a question and, and so looking at some of the timelines here, um, some of them start like back in twenty twenty-one. And then they conclude like either this year or twenty twenty-three or or, so I'm looking at one, actually, I was looking at two, the Putnam Park Improvements, estimated date seven one, two thousand twenty-one, and then the Pocket Park Improvements, seven one, twenty twenty-one, and to be concluded at eight thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, which seems fairly quick. Um, so I'm just wondering about some of the timelines. Can you just explain a little bit on those?
Sure. Um, kind of a, a good segmo- segue to the last, uh, question. If it involves federal money, then we have to go through the Caltrans Local Division of Assistance. And that adds year and a half, two years to any project. If it's, uh, funding that's general fund or, or funding that this, under the city's control, we can do the design and construct, let's say, a street project all within twelve months. Um, and then Pocket Park is a, is a fairly small project, a pathway project, and, and so the construction window would be a lot smaller and, uh, things, and it, again, it's, it's city-controlled funding. So there's a big variety of, of timelines on these projects that, that are influenced by many times outside institutions.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? I have a few, but I want to have anybody else fit in first. So seeing nobody, no other commissioner raising their hand. Um, I just wanted to, and, you know, I really appreciate the, the depth that's here, but it's also a lot to, to sort of take in and stuff. But in the, um, yeah, like in the West Sierra Avenue project, uh, which has a precursor, the sewer replacement, are you making that visible? That was one of my questions, and I think you answered it. Are you making it visible on the, on the construct, on the project website, which is very good to have up online, that the sewer replacement happens, needs to happen first, because the timeline looks very compressed?
Do we have linkages between the project? I think in the project description for the sewer project, it does say, this is my recollection, is that, um, the timing is being dictated by the street project. I, I don't think it's in the timeline down below, but that would be captured in the description of the project.
Because that's normal in Gantt charts, that that's visible. And I, and I, and I think that should be at least stated somewhere that there's a, you know, there's a decision, don't do the street replacement until the sewer is done, unless it's taken off.
Right, right. Yeah. And, and at the, at the staff level and interacting with the consultants to design and then deliver these projects, certainly we have these very complicated link Gantt charts that, that will, will, you know, include, reflect these, these linkages. But on the, on the public-facing, uh, websites that we have, it's more, um, just to say, hey, this is coming up, this is the next, what's coming up next. And then here's where we are with the status of what's being completed. So it's, it's, um, it's another kind of layer on top.
Okay. Just hopefully, hopefully, hopefully get it right, because we've all been in situations, we've seen something has gone wrong over many years of using those. I, I've got a question about the general plan, um, in terms of the action items. I mean, this got me to read the general plan a lot more, so I've done a lot of homework on here. But, um, Action, um, CL one M, it says required developers to design local roadways um, to speeds, for speeds of twenty-five miles per hour or less, responsibility public works and it's streets other than materials and collectors. Now, I know there's been a lot of discussion on West Sierra. So what is, if you're, if you're looking at that, um, redesign, has that perspective been brought in?
Yes, yes. Um, West Sierra Avenue is a very exciting project because we're, um, refreshing that street and using all of the latest. There's been a lot of developments over the last few years on making roadways more bike and pedestrian friendly with narrowing the travel lanes, uh, having this hatched buffer zone, having our, you know, reflective lights at the crosswalks and having high-visibility crosswalks. And, um, we've got li- uh, lighted ballards that are going to be out. I'm pointing right behind me because that's where it is, but, um, at East School Street and West Sierra Avenue, there's going to be six ballards, one on each corner, two, two on each corner and, and a few sprinkle in between. And so all of these things are, are to focus people's attention, the driver's attention to a pedestrian level and to slow down. Um, you know, with the, the traffic code, the vehicle code, we can't just say, oh, twenty-five miles an hour. It has to be dictated by an eighty-fifth percentile formula and all of that. But hopefully that these, say, these traffic calming measures, once they're in, will be responded to. And then once we do another traffic study, that'll be reflected in lower speeds. So yes, that is the goal, and that's being incorporated into the design.
That's, that's great, because, I mean, Catati that I know of has had three people die in the roads in the last ten years, and one of them was on West Sierra Avenue. And looking at the statistics out there, um, you know, last year, there were, what, three thousand eight hundred and forty-seven people in California that were violently killed by the traffic. Um, and we've had one of them, we've had, we've had one just recently, and it's, I mean, I think it's a statistical thing, but it's based on the design of the road and, and certainly, um, project zero, isn't it? The zero, zero, um, deaths on the roads is making that very, very visible. So in, in doing some of the statistics for the national level, if we downscaled it to Catati, it would almost be statistically that three people every four years could get killed. And I think we're, we're ahead of that, and we certainly don't want to get behind that, but really appreciate, you know, the work that you're doing on that level, because, um, it is, you know, statistically, it's, it's a terrible thing that's sort of going on there. So I've got another question on one of the, um, places that's coming up again, um, the Highway one one six on the West Catati Avenue, um, which has come up for, uh, um, or is being budgeted there for five hundred thousand. And I'm wondering what your understanding of the timeline of that is, because Caltrans in the past, there's been a lot of discussion that it's often Caltrans who dictates the design, or that's been the discussion of it. Um, but I certainly, um, after our two thousand and nineteen project that we were looking at for crossing that road, I spoke to the, some of the Caltrans personnel, and they said the bicycle and pedestrian plan should really be up to date. And I know that's in process. So how, what's the timeline for the design of that junction? Um, and how is it in, how is it sort of informed by what, the way that Caltrans works? And what we can achieve? When do we need to get the bicycle and pedestrian plan to help that design?
Okay. I have, looking on the ClearGov website, um, we've got, we're, we're planning on starting that in this fiscal year.
Okay, I can't see it on the website. That's the only thing. As I looked on, I'm logged in.
This might be the internal. Well, no, it's, it's in the, it's in the budget book or the capital plan, the multi-year capital plan.
Uh-huh.
That is provided it has, and, um, well, Commissioner Moore referred to it. There's start dates and completion dates listed there. So that's true for this project as well. It's got an estimated start date of July first, twenty-two. Nothing really gets started right out of the gate there, but, um, anytime between, you know, the, the early, early fiscal year would be good to get, is our plan. And then the estimated completion is, uh, November twenty-four, just because we're looking for, uh, federal money, grant money for that project. And that, like I said before, that extends out project schedules. So, um, the, to the extent we need to get design started to better position ourselves for grant money, that's what we'll be doing, uh, with the preliminary design, uh, July or August of this year. But don't expect, don't expect that to be implemented, uh, for at least a couple of years.
Sure. And I, and that's really what the question is, is that's just what is that? The, the sausage machine, once it gets going and, um, wait, um, so will that preliminary design be open for review for pedestrian and bicycle safety? My favorite topic.
Yes, yes. We, um, I, the la- that, that is, that is our, part of our process is to, um, put that, put, put the preliminary design out to the stakeholders, including the public for comment. Um, and then we've got, we're going to integrate that with the bike pedestrian master plan. And of course, the findings of the local road safety plan enroll that all in together, because that, that, that project certainly has aspects of, of all of those report, those stud, those special focused studies.
My vice chair, I could, I would just jump in to add, so, um, because we've been delayed in, in getting the bike and ped master plan update going, um, we've been looking at the current CIP project list, and what we found is that a lot of the, the bike and ped master plan project list and from the adopted plan in two thousand and fourteen have been incorporated into the CIP and are getting built or have been built. And so our goal was to take all the efforts that were put in with the Vision Zero process and the long-range safety plan process, and then work with the community to, uh, flush out the remainder of the project list, take all of those documents together, do an update to the bike and, uh, ped master plan that then incorporates all of them. But to that point, I think we have, uh, a good head start on getting a lot of that traction, which, as, um, Director Scott has indicated, is already beginning to plug into the CIP. And, and I absolutely hear your concern that, um, we're kind of getting late to the game with the bike and ped update. But I'm trying to do what we can to ensure that the efforts that we put into that are built into the CIP and then get submitted with those funding requests that, that Director Scott talked about, ultimately to, uh, happen in a couple of years from now. So I'm hoping that we can all get it to true up, even though we have gotten a little bit of a delay in getting the process going.
Well, that's, that's really what I'm, I'm asking about, because just in, in, in the sense of that it's a Caltrans project as well as a federal project, or I, with the discussion in the past, and, and I did raise this at the end of two thousand and nineteen. So it's hopefully, you know, the, the sausage machine gets all of these parks in place and, um, sort of going. So thank you. Thank you for that input. Um, got another question about the Roretto and Marsh McGuinness Pathway resurfacing. And I know that's something coming up, but there's a, there's a difference on the two sides of the paths. And I'm just wondering what the perspective is on self-healing pathways or pathways. Um, we, we, we've got the Laguna Pathway that is, uh, I think a crushed gravel. And it's my perspective, at least on it, that it, 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 it works better with changes on the ground um, than some of the other harder surfaces. And I'm just wondering, what, will there be a review of this? Or is this the best time to talk about it on how do you make it so that it's, in a sense, less maintenance? Um, self-healing, it'll adjust itself when those roots come in, um, and other properties?
Yes, so the, the Pocket Park and McGuinness Pathway projects, because there's, they're so small, have been combined, and, um, we opened bids last week on that. And, um, that item is becoming, going before council, uh, on, um, her next council meeting on the twenty-fourth for award of that contract. And, um, this, the, the, the approach we've been taking is to put that decomposed granite pathway material, granitecrete, it's got a binder in it, um, to keep it all together, but it does give, as you say. Um, and, and we've designed the, the pathway at McGuinness with the DG and the pathways over at Pocket Park with the DG. So that material is being used in both places.
Right. Well, that's, that's, yeah. Um, so the other, one last question on the Old Redwood Highway Traffic Flow Improvements, and I know this has come up before, but in reading through the general plan, um, we've, we've got the definition for the project from East Catati Avenue to Commerce on along, um, Old Redwood Highway, but in the, uh, general plan, Action CI one C, it says implement coordinated signal timing along the Gravenstein Highway corridor for all of the signals when they're actually put in there. So will, will, how does that work with the current plan that money's being spent on, which looks like it goes up to Commerce? And will that include the other? I know those, those lights there get quite complicated in the past. There's been a Catati part, there's been a Caltrans part with Highway one O one, and it's got kind of, it And it's got kind of, it doesn't work very well for certainly individuals going through it. But in terms of the traffic flow improvement, will that be continuous all the way through to the west side traffic signals?
That that is the long-term goal of this project. Specifically, you know, it's all done incrementally, right? So, from Commerce to East Qatati Avenue is being handled, and we, with the change order, we added a few signals on East Qatati Avenue, because those controllers were outdated. And we're adding in the advanced detection or dilemma detection radar on those. So, which is a good feature, but but that's not addressing your question. In 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 our five-year CIP, we do not have a traffic flow improvements project specifically identified for the Highway one sixteen. I I think this is a good time to to just remind everybody that we get it, we get a we get a chance at this every year. We come back and projects change, priority change, and we'd like to see some continuity each year. But we do have that ability to revisit some of our priorities and as things get completed, and we can add a year to the CIP, move move the CIP along. So, that, I think it's good to see, personally, a traffic flow improvements project, it kind of shows the maturity of of our city, that we're not only looking at our roadway paving, but hey, we're starting to look at optimizing traffic flow and controllers and all the new devices that are coming out that are making, making it safer for vehicles, bikes and pets, pedestrians. I I'm not sure if that answered your question directly.
I think, I think it does. I mean, I think what you're saying is, is there's only an Old Redwood Highway section. And yet, once you, once, if you're going north on Old Redwood Highway, and then you turn left onto Highway one one six, Gravenstein Highway, where does that traffic signalization improvements, the signal timing, how far do those, that that collector, collecting all the traffic lights go? Because there's, there's one set of traffic lights as you turn left, and then there's another set just before you get under, get to Highway one oh one going west, and then there's another set afterwards. And then, there's this proposed set that's going to be further along on West Qatati Avenue. So,
Right.
It would seem to me, I mean, just because I'm reading the general plan, that this, you know, it is dealing with a different section, so maybe, but it seems like those should all, there should be a plan to combine them all, because people do travel destinations. They don't just travel a segment of the road. So, maybe I'm flagging it and saying, I think there's something missing for the next time around.
Right, right. No, I I message received. This one specifically is on Old Redwood Highway from the Commerce, you know, where the metering light is to get onto the freeway, that that traffic signal there, the one at Gravenstein Way in Old Redwood Highway. Once we get a new traffic signal on William George, that'll be, it's designed, sixty percent design, that'll be tied into it, and then the East Qatati Avenue. So, it's, it's, it's specifically for that, but you're right, it's it's like water flowing. And you've, we've got to think about other out, other destinations that people are traveling in. And this pro, this specific project does not go beyond the that corridor at this time.
Right, so the, so another question on there, the, maybe this isn't the right place for that, but just to say that, I mean, I know in my college, when I was graduating at the end of the the eighties, I mean, we were, it was studying these sort of problems. So, it's good to hear that it's getting out into the commercial world, I guess, or that we're getting it in Qatati. And I'm I'm intrigued by the advanced dilemma detection system, which is essentially looking for speeding motorists. And are they trafficking, are they crashing through a red light and then going to basically halt all of them? And the problem I think we've got there is, how do you know if it's working? How can you test it? But anyway, that's a separate engineering question that I would put to engineering students rather than form. But thank you very much. I think that's the end of my questions. Has anybody else got any quest, anymore, any commissioners got questions? If not, I'll close the commissioners' questions and go to public comment. If you could see if there's anybody from the public who's got questions.
Sure, to our attendees tonight, please use the raised hand icon to speak, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. There, there is no public comment. Vice Chair, that will end public comment.
Thank you very much. So, I'll bring it back to the commission. Any, any thoughts? Further thoughts? Commissioner Murphy?
Thanks. I just, I wanted to make a comment. In looking at the proposed capital projects for two thousand twenty two, twenty three, there's a, there's so much exciting work that we're seeing happening in Qatati, which I'm very excited about. I did want to comment, as a resident who's seen some of that work already take place in the past couple of years, specifically on the West Qatati and Olaf area, where we had infrastructure replacements and fairly significant roadwork done. I would just use this as an opportunity to say, when we're putting out bids and implementing, you know, our schedule for work, if we could really keep in mind the safety of how that work is completed. I think that there was, there's room, always room for improvement, but from what I saw, room for improvement with traffic control around this type of major work in roadways, also room for improvement for lay-down yards where we're putting equipment. Is it in the right place? Is it the safe place? And then, also, just general cleanliness of our contractors that we're using for this type of work. You know, are they covering dirt, or is it blowing into neighbors' yards? Are they leaving garbage in the area? Are they just keeping their space clean and tidy? So, I I wanted to use it as an opportunity to kind of share some of my experiences, and I know that that's a high priority for us as a city, because I've seen us be very stringent about that, which I think is wonderful. And would just hope that we could carry that on with some of these significant projects that we see coming in the next couple of years.
Thank you, Commissioner Murphy. Any other commissioners got comments, or if somebody wants to make a motion?
I will make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Qatati, finding the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty two and two thousand twenty three annual and multiple year capital improvements in conformity with the City of Qatati general plan.
I'll second.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yep.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much for all the work that's gone into that. And if we could now go on to the next item, number three, the gas station fossil fuel ban, I guess there's, I've got a three, six, four, eight. I've got two items in here. Three, okay, three, six, five, four.
I'm not sure of that number. And one is the staff report and one is the resolution.
Okay, something new there. Thank you.
We could pull up this slide. Thank you. Vice Chair, members of the commission, my name is JP Harris. I'm senior planner with the City of Qatati. And tonight's discussion is regarding the prohibition of fossil fuel sales for vehicles, otherwise known as a gas station ban. This item begins on packet page two sixty. And if we could go to the next slide, please. I mean, I, these slides pretty loosely follow the the staff report. So, the proposed ordinance does four major things. One, it prohibits new and expanded service station infrastructure that stores, conveys, and dispenses fossil fuels to vehicles with internal combustion engines. It would limit service station modifications to those that, one, improve physically environmental qualities, soil, groundwater, stormwater, improve traffic safety, enable charging stations and hydrogen fuel stations, and five, provide for other commercial uses. This would be something like a convenience store or food service or something like that, that you often see associated with service stations. It would also clarify the approval requirements and acceptable locations for battery charging stations and hydrogen fuel stations. These are elements that serve zero emission vehicles. And it would define specialized terms, including an amendment to the term service station, which is a use, land use category, to clarify that it's limited to serving zero emission vehicles. Next slide, please. Just some background. Two thousand one through three thousand twenty two, twenty years plus, the city has been very assertive in its goals and resolutions and actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. There is a snapshot of that on package page two seventy, which lists the whole series of actions that the city has taken. But going kind of more salient to this issue, in March of two thousand twenty one, Petaluma banned future gas stations in the city. This was, as far as I know, as far as everyone knows, the first in the nation. Following that, several other cities, including Qatati, voiced a desire to also consider similar bans. In September, September thirteenth, the RCP of two thousand twenty one, RCPA, Regional Climate Protection Authority, for Sonoma County, passed Resolution two thousand twenty one dash zero zero three, which recommended that the county and all incorporated jurisdictions, quote, cease all processing of applications for and permitting of new gas stations or expansions of existing gas stations in their local jurisdiction. The following month, in October twenty six, two thousand twenty one, the City Council had a discussion about regarding the priorities and commitments of the Community Development Department, and affirmed that they wanted to see, or they wanted to consider a gas station ban, and that it was a priority for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. So, we are trying to meet that direction. And just locally, in the North Bay area, where this is currently, where these actions seem to be happening, other communities such as Sabacopol, Rona Park, Calistoga, and American Canyon have also adopted gas station bans. Next slide, please. This particular ban targets the fossil fuels of vehicles. I'm basically the transportation sector. The pie chart on your left is state greenhouse gas emissions, and you'll see, it's hard to see, and I apologize for that. But the transportation sector statewide makes up for forty percent of all greenhouse gas emissions in the state, which is a significant margin over the next, which is industrial at like just around twenty percent. Within Sonoma County, transportation actually accounts for sixty percent of greenhouse gas emissions, which is, makes it by far the largest contributor of greenhouse gas emissions. Therefore, that that, you know, which explains a desire to target transportation, since that is the most effective way that we're going to have to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And actually, within the City of Qatati, that the probably transportation accounts for closer to seventy percent of greenhouse gas emissions, because we don't have fertilizer and livestock operations. We don't have solid waste disposal. Our solid waste disposal is actually part of our transportation emissions. So, so it's a higher, even in the city. Next slide, please. This is just a graphic of the locations of the gas stations that currently exist in the Qatati Rona Park area. The the kind of outline that you see is a two and a half mile radius buffer, and you can see that the city is well-covered with existing gas stations. There's no shortage of gas stations in this area. There's five within the City of Qatati and another thirteen within the City of Rona Park. Next slide. Some other background, the RCPA, in March of twenty two, passed the Climate Mobilization Strategy. Within that strategy, there is Strategy Four, which is EV access for all partnership. It has four go, goals or objectives. Two of them are specific to to this action today, which is to work with the regional partners and local businesses to develop over ten thousand public and workplace charging stations in Sonoma County. And by by two thousand twenty seven. And Objective four point two, which is to develop a package of local ordinances and other actions to address remaining permitting barriers for installing charging equipment, while also limiting permitting of new fossil fuel infrastructure. So, it's really that key, four point two is really a key one. Now, this proposed ordinance would also support executive, the Governor's Executive Order B forty eight dash eighteen, which was signed in two thousand eighteen, January of two thousand eighteen, which has calls for five million zero emission vehicles on California roads by two thousand thirty, calls for two hundred hydrogen fueling stations and two hundred and fifty thousand zero emission vehicle chargers, including ten thousand direct current fast chargers by two thousand twenty five. That executive order was followed by another executive order that's salient to this, which was Order N seventy nine dash twenty, that which was signed in two thousand twenty. It seeks statewide carbon neutrality by two thousand forty five and calls for one hundred percent of in-state sales of new passenger vehicles to be zero emission by two thousand thirty five, and one hundred percent of medium and heavy duty vehicles to be zero emission by two thousand forty five, where feasible, and two thousand thirty five for drive trucks, which are short distance delivery trucks. Next slide, please. This action's also consistent with the general plan, particularly the circulation element, Objective CI three A, which is to reduce the levels of greenhouse gas emissions created by automobile traffic in Qatati. Also, objective within the conservation element, Objective CON two B, which is to reduce emissions of greenhouse gases from city operations and community sources. As well, it accomplishes some goals that are laid out in Climate Action two thousand twenty and beyond. This is our climate action plan, which is to encourage a shift towards low-carbon transportation options and to encourage a shift towards low-carbon fuels in vehicles and equipment. Next slide, please. So, just currently, we don't have, within the city, a definition or a land use category called gas station. We have what we call service station. And within the definition of service station, it references the sale of gasoline and other motor vehicle fuels. And the current definition is there. The salient part is the first sentence, which says service station means a retail business selling gasoline and or other motor vehicle fuels and related products. And then, it acknowledges that other, other uses like convenience store and vehicle services can be combined with a gas station. Presently, we allow, with use permit approval, gas stations in four zoning districts. CE, which is the Commercial East Qatati District, CG, which is the Commercial Gravenstein Highway District, CD, downtown commercial, rather small district, and CA, Commerce Avenue, which is the and CA Commerce Avenue, which is the northernmost, the northernmost section of the downtown specific plan. And and it really is specifically right along Commerce Avenue from where the highway on-ramp starts to where the roundabout is going in at Rona Park. Next slide, please. Also, service stations are subjected to or subject to certain development standards. Those are comes out of the municipal code, Section seventeen forty-two one eighty. And if you want to review those, you can see those on packet pages three sixty-three through three sixty-six. And essentially, they, you know, they limp, they provide for permit and application requirements, limitations on locations, site requirements, site planning standards, building design standards, facility operating standards, where what what accessory uses are allowed, as well as the requirements for the removal of fuel storage tanks upon quitting or change in use. Next slide, please. So the ordinance proposes to change the definition of a service station to be to say service station alternate fuels only. We could also use service station non-fossil fuels there, which is, and I'll talk about why we may want to consider something a little bit different later. But it would be in a retail business that provides electric charging or fueling for zero zero emission vehicles and may sell related products. And then specifically, new or expanded facilities to store, convey, and dispense fossil fuels are prohibited. So it because it gets laid out right in the title that that type of use would no longer be allowed. And then it also acknowledges that other commercial services can be combined with the service station, or excuse me, other commercial uses can be combined with the service station use as well. And the ordinance also proposes to remove CD Downtown Commercial as a permissible area for a service station. Primary reason, well, there's several reasons. But let's go to the next slide, please. It's very difficult to see because they're so small. But the only areas where CD isn't allowable land use are the named streets surrounding La Plaza. So along William, there's that pink CD. Along Henry Street, there's a little bit. And along Charles Street, there's a few parcels that are labeled CD. And and then, well, it's still kind of on Charles, but also kind of Charles Marshway. There's a little bit right there. None of the, all those areas are but residential districts. And those these those development standards that I've mentioned, they would prohibit the service stations in those areas. Also, there's no existing service stations in this zoning district. They're also very close to parks, and it would probably would create difficult traffic patterns on those secondary hub streets. So we think it makes sense to not include CD as an area for service stations. The remaining ones would be CE, CA, and CG. Next slide, please. Also, the ordinance proposes to add a new section to seventeen forty-two point one eighty. So it would essentially elaborate on what is prohibited, being the fossil fuels. And it would give provisions or it kind of put the sidebars on what modifications could happen at existing stations. And like I mentioned before, those would be for environmental protection, groundwater, soil, and stormwater, traffic safety, to put in services that serve zero emission vehicles, as well as to allow for modifications for other commercial uses that are not related to to fossil fuel cells. Next slide, please. The other proposed zoning changes, it would define electric vehicle charging station. We actually already do have this definition, but it's in a separate area of the municipal code. It comes out of Chapter fourteen, which is related to building codes. So we would take that same definition and also repeat it in the land use code, because it is a land use element, and clarify that they are permitted uses, accessory uses in all zoning districts, and that no use permit is required. This is pursuant to an Assembly Bill twelve thirty-six. And our Chapter fourteen references that, but the zoning code does not. So it would it would address that that missing piece of the zoning code. It would also define and describe where hydrogen fuel cell stations can be located. Presently, the the proposed ordinance would allow them only at service stations, and therefore, they could only go into the CE, CG, and CA zoning districts. They would require use permit approval. They look very much and feel like a regular gas pump. And it would support Executive Order B forty-eight eighteen, which calls for the zero emission infrastructure. Next slide, please. Can we go back one slide? Okay, these are the zoning changes. Okay, then go go to the next slide. Then these would be the proposed definitions that we would be changing. So this is the definition of electric vehicle charging station. Again, it's pretty much identical to the definition that we have in Chapter fourteen of the municipal code. The proposed change for fuel dealer is really just to ensure that there that people like that might be selling propane or something, you know, that and that particular commercial sale is not affected by an ordinance that goes after fossil fuels for vehicles. So essentially, we would just say that fuel dealer does not include hydrogen fuel cell stations or service stations, which are separate defined use. So this would be, boy, I use them, and I forgot what their name is now. But we have a large propane dealer in our in our industrial area. And this this type of ordinance would not affect them. That's right, thank you. Would not would not affect their business. And then again, we would have a definition for hydrogen fuel cell station. That's current, it is currently proposed. Next slide, please. Additionally, we would describe what is a zero emission vehicle. Essentially, a zero emission vehicle means any type of passenger vehicle that does not miss emit exhaust gas or other pollutants from onboard sources of power. That's the definition right there. Those tend to be electric vehicle, well, they are electric vehicles. And currently, there's two types. There's battery powered, and then there's hydrogen fuel cell. Hydrogen fuel cell makes up a very, very small proportion of zero emission vehicles. Overwhelmingly, they are battery charged vehicles. And next slide, please. So and so the recommendation is that you adopt the attached resolution. The resolution would recommend city council adoption of the of the ordinance that's attached to the resolution to prohibit new and expanded facilities for fossil fuels sales to vehicles with internal combustion engines and support charging and fuel facilities that serve zero emission vehicles. Before we leave this topic, though, I do want to acknowledge that we received four letters on this topic. One from, two from private individuals, one from another individual who happens to be a gas station owner. We did notify the the gas stations in town. And they supported the ordinance, but wanted some assurance that, you know, that other commercial businesses that they engage in, like serving food, would not be affected by the ordinance. And then we also received a letter from advocacy group Congas, which opposes new gas stations in Sonoma County. And we received that letter yesterday. And since then, I've had a number of conversations with representatives of that that group. And we met this morning over Zoom. And um, and I think they're going to be speaking tonight. And they can correct me where I'm wrong. But overwhelmingly, their concern, I would say their concern is two pieces. One is the inclusion of providing for hydrogen fuel cells in this ordinance. And then the other is kind of the co-mingling of a prohibition with maybe wanting to promote another activity like zero emissions. I can say in talking to them and reviewing the ordinance, if the commission would like, we can easily drop hydrogen fuel cell from this ordinance. It's really was incorporated because a couple of their of the jurisdictions had included it. It didn't seem controversial to me when I was assembling the ordinance. But it's also fine if we don't, if we just kind of remain silent on hydrogen fuel cells. It's really not a critical piece of the of the proposed ordinance. We could easily just line out, line out those elements and proceed with the fossil fuel ban. So I just wanted to say that, that that's not something staff is hardcore and pushing and actually doesn't even see a major need for it. So we could, we could move forward if the council, or excuse me, if the commission would like to. Without that element, it's easy for me to edit before I take it to city council for consideration. When with that, I'm available for any questions and comments. Thank you.
I'll open it up to the commission for questions of staff. Commissioner Moore.
So JP, I had a question about, so we have certain zones where if say if somebody wanted to do just all electric chargers and say charge, say it was just a a new way of seeing a a service station. It was all electric chargers, but it was brand new.
Right.
Could we, could we put something like that in the zone that it's it's appropriate for?
So that's one of the reasons we maintain the the use land use category service station is so that we can have a new facility or a novel facility or a facility like that incorporated into another type of commercial enterprise. So the answer to that would be yes, but only in those areas where service station is allowed. So CE, CG, and CA district. You would not, because we're kind of clarifying that they're permitted, but they are accessory use. You would not be able to do something like that, say, in the heart of a residential district. It would have to be, the service station would be the primary use, and then the charging facilities would be accessory to that primary use. Does that make sense?
So it would have to be some kind of commercial, like convenience store type thing with charging stations included in it.
It wouldn't have to be, but let's just say it was a vacant piece of land, and really, all they wanted to do was was would charge is charge vehicles. We would refer to that if if that's all it was doing, and there was no attached use to it. We would probably refer to that and treat it like a service station. And then that would be the primary use. It would have the same lighting regulations, the same kind of landscape regulations, operating regulations that that service stations have, but it's just a charging facility. Presently, if you're, let's just say you're a convenience store or any other commercial enterprise, and you have onsite parking, today you can, and this ordinance would make clear that you're perfectly free to install electric vehicle charging stations as accessory use to to whatever business you have. So I don't know if I, hopefully, I'm clarifying it. If it were straight charging, we would treat it as a service station. If there were another commercial enterprise, they already can add electric chargers.
No, you clarified it. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore.
Thanks. So real quick, just a point of clarification. If we are to remove essentially gas stations out of the service station definition, what do we refer to them as?
Well, we would refer to them as service stations still, because we don't have gas stations. So we're just removing the sale of gas. So they would be referred to as service stations that provide fueling and charging for vehicles. So it'd be service stations, and then parenthetically, non-fossil fuel sales or alternative fuel sales. Congas would prefer to go with the parenthetical word non-fossil fuels as opposed to focusing on alternative fuels. It's kind of a nuance, but I understand it. But anyway, so it would have, it would still be service station, and then have the parenthetical statement, non-fossil fuels. And then it would define that they are for charging or fueling, or basically that they're for charging or fueling of vehicles, but no fossil fuel sales.
And for the remaining stations that continue to sell fossil fuel materials, we would refer to them as?
They're they're still the service stations. That we've got, we keep the word service station. It's only like we just add that parenthetical part.
Got it.
They're service stations, and they get that kind of more special treatment with that new section I'm proposing to add to the to the standards, which kind of puts a framework along what kind of modifications they could do.
Okay, that makes sense. And then I I believe I was reading the packet correctly that this would be a change to our municipal code. But I did see that it says here modifications, I'm sorry, let me see if I can find this. So this would not then allow any sort of enlargement, extension, reconstruction, or relocation to a different portion of the lot or parcel for the fossil fuel service stations. I guess my question there is, under the word reconstruction, so when we're deal, when we're discussing these service stations that have essentially been grandfathered in, they're fossil fuel stations, and they remain. When we look at the word reconstruction and say that's not allowed, is that going to inhibit them from making improvements? You know, even if they're cosmetic improvements or other improvements to the service station because they are selling fossil fuels as opposed to other alternative options? I'm, I guess what my concern is, and my question here is, are we inhibiting them from maintaining and keeping the current service stations in a state that we would want them to be in if they're going to be in our communities?
So let me answer that a couple of different ways. Well, from a couple of different angles. So again, you're you're highlighting one of the reasons why we want to continue the service station use so that we don't automatically create a non-conforming situation where there is a lack of incentive to maintain and continue investment in these properties. We want that to continue. With respect to the facilities, I would say if if there was any public health and safety or environmental matter that needed to be addressed through some sort of project, then our ordinance would allow for that to happen. But then there's also the situation, the way we treat like billboard signs. You can maintain them, but you can't make large structural improvements that basically extend the life and use of that product, you know, beyond kind of its anticipated life. And it's a small, it's a nuance, and it's something, and it's something we would have to look at kind of on a case by case basis. But if it was a straight maintenance situation, if it was public health and safety, we would say yes. If it was something that was clearly trying to promote or continue fossil fuel sales in a way that's kind of inconsistent with the goals of this ordinance, then we would probably be recommending denial to to the to the planning commission for that type of project. I would, you know, it would have to happen on a kind of a case by case basis, though.
Okay, yeah, I think that I think that's one area potentially for concern, and I understand what you mean by case by case basis. But I'm I'm thinking especially with some of our service, current service stations that are, you know, very much in the forefront of our, you know, outer downtown area. If over the years, they start to become more dilapidated, or I I would hate for this to inhibit them from maintaining a nice space for us. um I I would hate for this to inhibit them from maintaining a nice space for us um because of, but continuing to sell the same product. And then we're kind of, um, I don't think that we've really I don't, I don't necessarily know that that changes how we're encouraging um renewable energy and renewable energy service centers, but I do want to make sure that what we have in place and what's grandfathered in. We're still encouraging that they maintain it in a way where it fits the the look and feel of our community.
Yeah, I I completely understand and we hope that we did accomplish that in the ordinance. We certainly gave that some thought, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other commissioners who would like to, Commissioner Moore, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I just have one other um question on this. So say a gas station um goes out of business and um it was grandfathered in, does that automatically uh mean that that another fuel station can't go in or can you kind of explain how that process is work?
Sure. So um, it's a lot like um, well, actually it's right in the code section. Um and we're not proposing to amend it except for to just um clear up the language a little bit, but if I could refer you to packet page. Package page three sixty six. In the very uh this is, it's the very last uh little subsection of that section for standards for gas stations. And it's um directly above the kind of the bold section five, you'll see a section that starts with the with the words removal of tanks upon secession or change of use. So if a gas station went out of business and um and a new owner did not pick up the gas station and if the gas station um was out of use for more than a hundred and fifteen out of a hundred and twenty days, um, that's it. The fuel pumps and the signs shall be removed and the tanks shall be removed and the ground treated uh in a remediation. That's the ordinance there. It is more strict than normal where uh I think we go for, we allow for a hundred and eighty days for a use to um be uh discontinued before it would lose like a use permit um uh approval. So this one, um, again, all we're proposing to do is just clarify that it could mean fuel like diesel because diesel, it just says gasoline now. But anyway, so that's that section. I think that addresses what you were asking.
Yeah, I was, I mean, I I saw that in here, but I was just I guess because it didn't conform to our usual CUP. And I was, I had some questions about that.
Yeah, I don't, I can't give you the history of why it's special that way. It looks like there clearly was at one time a discussion about this item um and and a desire to have a basically a shorter timeframe on um on use.
And this is Director House. I'd just like to add, so there is a fair amount of case law regarding existing land uses, especially if a use permit has been granted. And typically our service stations require use permits. So just be aware that this is our code language. However, if we push comes to shove, staff might have to take some extra steps to be sure to implement this or in a way that implements it in keeping with case law to essentially revoke a use permit.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and and thank you for clarifying that.
And Commissioner Murphy, you have your hand up?
Still.
Yes, uh, one more clarifying question. So um specific to the removal of, I think we said CD, the commercial downtown. Um, in looking at that map closer, that's in fairly close proximity to where I live. Is that an issue in how we're voting for this this evening? That particular detail, does that cause any issue for me? No left.
He might be uh checking out something. Um.
Trying to review my map, which is behind my monitors. I apologize.
Let me um, I am too.
You know, I think I'm pretty close to some of them as well.
I was gonna say, we all are pretty close to gas stations, so I don't know how you would.
It was, it was just those, yeah, I know the over, the overarching issue, obviously we're all affected as residents. But when I, when we looked closer at that map, um, I realized that those, those three small areas, zoning areas were actually quite close to where I live. So I wasn't I don't mean to complicate things, but just wanted to make sure I'm.
That's an excellent catch. Thank you.
Well, I'd hate to keep CD. Do we have a quorum? Maybe she can't um vote on this. Let's see. I don't think anyone else, is anyone else within five hundred feet of a pink area?
So Commissioner Murphy's house is within five hundred feet of the CD zone.
Okay. I think to be prudent, um that you should not vote on 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 the matter.
I think we saw a quorum on the remainder to vote on the recommendation for um CD to be removed.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that comment. Well, I'll, I'll, and I think um if anything else comes up, perhaps you could bring that up to um Commissioner Murphy as well and Commissioner Murphy can make her decision towards the end. Um, so I've got a couple of questions. Um, one of them, and I, you know, I think you probably, if you remove hydrogen from it, you solve a lot of of potential issues, but um uh the the issue I think is hydrogen, hydrogen fueling and it's fuel cells as the technology. But if we're doing hydrogen fueling, it looks to me like just looking out there at the moment, it's really going to be larger vehicles that would be more are getting into that market space. So I I don't think at this point we'd want to allow any service station in Qatari to have hydrogen fueling, be able to adopt hydrogen fueling. So if one of the service stations down East Qatari Avenue, we could end up with large vehicles, trucks, heavy vehicles coming into town to get their hydrogen fuel. So I I certainly think we think need to think about it a lot more. Um, but I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on um hydrogen fueling large trucks? Do we need to?
I, I would say that we haven't done the analysis to go the next step of making a hard prohibition on hydrogen fuels. I think the recommendation to just remain silent on it is a good one. Um, that comes from Congas on my discussions with them. I was um quickly persuaded that they had the right argument. Um, I think also, you know, we can always come back and look at it because I show your concern. In fact, that was that with Congas, uh speaking with Woody today is, you know, one thing we don't want Qatari to be is um a large truck servicing facility, which um you know, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know who's going to be the biggest users of hydrogen gas or hydrogen fuel cell technology, but I think it's reasonable to assume that it will be transportation vehicles, trucks, because they are the ones that make the long distance trips and will need that kind of um uh a facility that's similar to to gasoline or diesel. So um, I agree with you um that, you know, that we're just not at that point yet. But it's certainly something that we could bring back to commission at a later date and once we've had a little more discussions about that. I think right now, just not including it within the resolution, not defining it or clarifying it in the uh use tables. We'll address that. I will say hydrogen, um it's not a pressing problem. There's not a single hydrogen fueling station in Sonoma County. There's only one in Marin County, which is down in Mill Valley. So we don't, it's not like we have hydrogen uh facility, people banging on the door um to to build, build those anywhere in Sonoma County right now.
Great. Okay, thank you. And a similar question on, well, not not similar, I think this has already been answered, but I want to phrase it again. We have a high voltage transmission line that's coming right through town. Um, and if anybody was to want to put in those e fast EV chargers and use it, I think really as an accessory um to the the businesses because it's still not as fast as as our traditional charging, but do you do you see any limitation from the owner, like the owner Julie Van Lee of the Chevron gas station who wrote in, if she wanted, if they wanted to add um both EV charging and also on the next piece of land that's still in the same zone, more of a restaurant business or food business? Or if any of our downtown businesses wanted to behind their premise, behind their their restaurants, if they wanted to put in EV charges, do you see that this would limit that in any way?
Oh, well, without looking at any individual project, um, you know, and the conditions around it, I I couldn't answer that, but there's nothing in the ordinance that on its face would would limit what you just suggested. You know, there could be something unique to any individual property, but no, the ordinance itself would not create that kind of barrier.
Well, that sounds sounds good. That was my reading of it as well, but I just was hoping that the by the including electric vehicles in a service station definition, it wouldn't exclude their usage elsewhere.
No, I want to keep electric vehicles um in the certain, in in within all elements of the code. I think there's good reason to keep it in there. We deal with those quite frequently. It's kind of a missing piece, a cleanup that we need to do uh from when we um created the streamlining provisions in chapter fourteen. Is this something that I think would clean up our zoning code a little bit by maintaining the electric charging stations only?
Good. Okay, thank you. Well, I'll, is there any other questions from other commissioners who, at this point, before I go to public comment? Very good. I'll um open, if we could open up for public comment and maybe um Congas could come forward. I I do know them quite well, some of the people there, and I know they've put a lot of effort into this across the county. So um if we can open up for public comment, thank you.
To attendees tonight, please use the raised hand icon to speak, or if you are dialing in, use star nine. Woody Hastings, go ahead.
Okay, I just unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you. Um, thank you all. Thank you, Commissioner Hancock. And my name is Woody Hastings. I'm a co-coordinator of the Coalition Opposing New Gas Stations and thanks for the opportunity to speak. Really appreciate the staff's work on this. Um, I think they went above and beyond. Um, and uh, you know, the way I you know, tonight is not the night to really evaluate uh the the issue of hydrogen to go into the merits, yes or no, or to, you know, uh decide whether you're going to, you know, prohibit that or not. Uh, you know, the information that's provided uh in the packet is is great information to evaluate at another time in the future, um, I think. And, you know, it's just a bit premature. It's a complex issue. We found tonight that just the issue of you know, just the, just the act of prohibiting the new gas stations is complex. So our our advice usually is to really try to keep it just to the uh act of, you know, ceasing the permitting of new uh new gas stations. And we, and it's not, you know, it's not a symbolic thing alone. There are four, at least four active proposals for new gas stations in Sonoma County. So I think that uh some other points I wanted to make, you know, is that excluding hydrogen, mention of hydrogen or anywhere in the in this resolution does not foreclose on uh future uh opportunities. If hydrogen turns out to be something that makes sense, um, you know, leaving it out tonight does not harm that. Our experience, my experience, you know, things almost went sideways in Petaluma because they did include that. Um, lots of good questions about it, and so it's something that really requires more scrutiny. Um, and the point about why we are proposing using the non-fossil in the definition as opposed to alternative is just that alternative is really not uh not not well defined. It's it's not really various folks have different interpretations of what alternative. So I think I'm saying non-fossil fuel is a more um specific. Um, and I do want to say we focus on for the existing stations exclusively on expansion of the fossil fossil fuel infrastructure. And expansion is the key word. Key point here is that there is legislation that requires existing gas stations to replace single walled hulled uh single wall tanks, underground tanks with double wall tanks in twenty twenty five. So the language in the resolution should not run up against that state requirement. Thanks very much for the opportunity to comment.
Jenny Blaker, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, and yes, I'd like to thank the um staff very much for this very clear presentation and thorough research. Um, you've covered so many of the issues about why we want to do this. Um, and another one to highlight is the leaks and spills, um um, the pollution to air, water, soil, et cetera, including the leaking underground storage tanks, which are all over the county, including in Qatari and including in the abandoned gas station in Qatari right now and the impacts on human health and the environment. Um, on EV charging, just like to say that I think EV charging, if possible, should be where people already spend time, live, work, um shopping centers, community centers, things like that, where people can plug in for an hour or two while they're doing something else. Um, and that they don't need to be linked to gas stations, except maybe for fast charging the highway one oh one. Um, I think you've got that covered already in what you have just been discussing. Um, I think that's it. I I thank you for bringing this forward. I really hope that you will um will vote to prohibit the um dependence on fossil fuel in the future by um prohibiting new gas stations and new gas station infrastructure and um ignore the hydrogen for the time being, as um Woody and and others have already said. Thank you very much.
Lori Ann Barber, go ahead.
Ah, sorry, it took a long time for the unmute button to show. Maybe my computer's slow. Um, I also want to uh thank the commission for taking this up this evening and to the staff for the detailed work to in the report to bringing this forward. I am strongly in support of limiting fossil fuel stations and in infrastructure in Qatari. I think it's important and helps keep the city in line with our climate goals. Um, I don't think any new gas stations are needed. There are plenty here. People don't wait in long lines typically. Um, they, because fewer and fewer gas cars will be sold based on state mandates, uh, it wouldn't really even be a good business model for someone to want to open a new gas station, in my opinion. Um, I also want to agree that I don't think that the hydrogen fueling part needs to be in the current ordinance. I think that could easily be addressed at another time separately. Um, so I think those are all my comments for tonight. And again, I am in support of limiting and banning future gas stations, fossil fuel infrastructure in Qatari. Thank you.
Vice Chair Hancock, that will end public comment.
Yes, thank you. So I'll bring it back to the um to the commissioners for any for thoughts and um any question, more questions of staff? Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, just to clarify, is it possible to break out the um the CD section of the uh recommendation into two different items to vote on, or should I abstain from the entire thing?
So Commissioner So Commissioner Murphy, I just uh looked, and we appear to have two commissioners within five hundred feet of the commercial downtown zoning district. So it would be my recommendation that any uh motion. Um, not include the changes to the commercial downtown land use category. And specifically identify that that is not included in the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just for the commissioners, um, you know, consideration on that, if we did that. It's it, I would say it's really not going to make a big difference, because. As I mentioned during my presentation, none of these areas, I think, would even qualify. So they. Even though we listed as an area where it could, where it might be allowed, once we got into the actual um land use. Uh, standards that come out of that section seventeen forty two one eighty. Um, not, no site is going to be able to achieve those standards. So in a way, they're already de facto banned in CD district.
Is it still something that? You would take to the city council? Um, as a piece of information or option for them to make the decision on, I would, I would just hate for us to make a decision solely based on the fact that we can't vote on it.
I think I I think we could bring it in there and just say that we, you know, we couldn't include it in tonight's. Uh, piece because of the conflict of interest.
That that makes sense to me. Thank you.
And so we don't, we wouldn't be bringing a recommendation to them on that on that particular element.
So we would just vote on the other elements. We would specifically exclude that. So I'd I'd like to bring up the um the the general question, what the commissioners think on the hydrogen side of things. I'll I'll put my all in to. With and say, I I'm happy to have it removed. Um, I don't see that we really want to have something that we could have heavy vehicles come to Qatari, and it's a. It's a complexity at this point that would be better addressed in a in a direct study. So. Um, I'm just wondering what other commissioners think.
I I I just had a question on that, actually, for either JP or Noah. If I could, um, Vice Chair Hancock.
Sure.
On the. Over by the Lowe's in the industrial area, we used to have more of a a trucking company over there. So if we had a trucking company, say like Reliance, where we used to have behind those. Um, come in and say they wanted to do their own fueling over there. Would that be something that would be prohibited through this if they, if say they had trucks that use this new um?
Um, first, well, uh, it's prohibited now.
Okay.
They actually did ask uh if they could do that, and we told them, no, they couldn't. This was several years ago. Um, that is an industrial, um, that's the CI Commercial Industrials District. No fueling, no service stations are permitted in that particular zoning district. As well, we don't have, our code doesn't allow for provisions of fueling like you just mentioned outside of a service station. So um right now they couldn't do it. Uh, we did have a person that wanted to do um. I know I might read, spent most of the time talking to them, but they wanted to have a mobile fueling service, of which we also said, no. Um, our code does not allow for that type of service. So this um, so the answer to that is, no, they would not be able to. This this ordinance doesn't affect them anyway, because they're they're just, they're not within an area. That where a service station could be constructed.
Yeah, no, I I that was my only kind of, just trying to think outside the box if there was anything that. Was kind of like remotely would come in and and want to use that kind of technology, but.
Well, I think I, if you're looking for an area, the highest risk area, I would say would be further down Gravemstein Highway, um, west of Alder. Where we also have some trucking facilities, um, you know, existing, they're non-conforming, but um. That is the area that I would identify as the the highest potential risk area for hydrogen fueling services.
Okay. Well, I don't have a problem taking that out of the um, the resolution.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Commissioner Savage, do you have a um a position on it or an opinion?
Um, no, I agree with you, uh, Mr. Hancock, that the hydrogen needs some additional studies as well.
Then the other area that I think we were discussing about was the name. Would it um make sense to go with the name, the the other name that JP was suggesting?
Non-fossil fuel cells.
Non-fossil fuel.
Yeah.
I'm I'm pretty favorable towards that, but other commissioners?
I think that sounds good.
Sorry, could you clar- clarify again? Maybe I didn't capture.
So isn't it, uh, right now, the current proposal in in the ordinance is the definition. Has service station, and then it says parenthetically, alternative fuels. So rather than using alternative fuels, the parenthetical part would say non-fossil fuel cells.
I understand. I I support that. I support that too.
You know, there will, there will be some other tweaks as well before I bring it to city council, but they'll all be related to exactly what we're talking about here, like cleaning up that definition a little bit. And um uh removing any discussion of hydrogen fuel cells.
So so JP, what sort of options do you think we have for here? What would you like to? Um, how should the uh commission progress with this? You've suggested a number of changes.
Unless Noah has some other recommendations, I would say make a motion to approve the the uh adopt the resolution with the caveat that all. Um, elements of hydrogen fueling station be removed from the ordinance. And um and the name change that we just discussed.
And no element of the recommendation. Is pertaining to the commercial downtown zoning district.
Right, and we'll eliminate that piece as well. So three parts.
And we can um. Are you, would you be comfortable, Commissioner Murphy, voting on that as a group, or do you want to? Okay, so would I have anybody who would make a motion? For those changes?
I will make a motion. Um, to adopt the ordinance of the City Council of Qatari. Amending section.
I think it's actually making a recommendation to the city council. Rather than all we're doing is making a recommendation to the city council to adopt the ordinance. That's sorry, that's just the word.
Understand. Okay, right. Um, yes, I'll make a motion um. To recommend to the city council that they adopt the ordinance. Um. I'm, uh, let's see. That's amending section seventeen twenty four zero two zero and section seventeen four two one eight zero. Um, and chapter seventeen point nine of the Qatari municipal code to prohibit facilities that store, convey or dispense fossil fuels to vehicles with internal.
Stop there.
Okay, um, and I want to, I'll note the three things that we discussed. So this would be. Um, with the understanding that we remove all references to hydrogen fueling. Um, and that we um are not making any sort of recommendation or motion on the commercial downtown zoning. Um, and also that we rename um the service station from alternative to non-fossil fuel.
Thank you very much. Very good. Have we got a second?
All second.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes. Well, thank you to everybody who's done a lot of work on that. It's uh very much a technical area of of meeting the city's goals and unwinding some of the carbon economy, I think. Um, and we should go on to reports by staff.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hancock. Just briefly, I want to highlight an email I sent out to you and some other members of the community who had expressed interest in. Uh, housing issues. Um, so we, you know, have a sign up location on the city's housing website webpage. Uh, that allows anyone interested in housing issues to sign up. And then obviously I included the commission because. Uh, you will be voting on the housing element update process. And so we just have finalized the schedule for the remainder of this process. And so. Tomorrow, uh, at nine thirty in the morning at Qatari Coffee, I'll be hosting an in-person meeting. To gain input from folks on uh the housing element update process. Basically. I just wanted to hear about individual stories uh that people have experienced with finding housing and keeping their housing in Qatari. Uh, this meeting meeting is specifically targeting the senior community in Qatari, but uh it's open to anyone in the public. Uh, I'll be there around nine AM and staying until eleven thirty um to gain input. And so you all were copied on that email. And then. Uh, we directly mailed a notice of that to all residents of the Mobile Home Parks and. Uh, met with the folks over at Charles Street Village to have them hand out flyers. So we really just. Trying to do a lot of effort to hear directly from those folks because they have a unique perspective. Uh, and then keeping with that theme, the next day on Wednesday, May eighteenth, from five thirty to seven in the Qatari Room. Uh, we'll be hosting a meeting uh to also have the same conversation about housing and people's experiences. Uh, but this time we targeted the Spanish-speaking community. Uh, we have a translator on site. Uh, there's a copy of the flyer in Spanish. Uh, the survey that we put together has also been translated to Spanish, and there's a link to that on the flyer. Uh, as well. So if you know any folks who are more comfortable uh in Spanish, then please forward that on. And I just wanted to highlight that. And then. Um, planning on June first and June eighth, uh, city staff will be um along with the others. Rec staff that usually table at the farmer's market, just to have conversations with folks who have questions about the housing element update process. Uh, and again, to gain their input. Uh, we will be showing the uh the, for the first time, the graphic of potential housing opportunity sites. That graphic was also included in your email, um, so you can go ahead and check that out. Although. Planning commissioners are um conflicted out from commenting on those sites. So if you do provide input, then that'll be done as a. Uh, individual citizen. Uh, we will uh exclude that part of the conversation from your June fourteenth. Um, joint meeting workshop with the city council, so that's another date. Uh, but we will have a discussion with the city council on the housing opportunity sites during their regularly scheduled meeting on that evening, so of June fourteenth. So just know that. Uh, and then, uh, lastly, we anticipate the thirty day public review process beginning. On the housing element draft itself in early August. And so all those are identified in the flyer that you're emailing. Uh, links to the surveys are there, both in Spanish and English, uh, and a gra- a copy of the graphic uh showing the potential housing opportunity sites. And then. Uh, just an FAQ for kind of people to to bring up themselves up to speed on the housing element update. So just wanted to kind of highlight that. Uh, really looking forward to the next couple of days for chatting with the community. And then um trying to get the uh last of the public engagement efforts. Uh, completed Tuesday, June June fourteenth. So if you or anyone you know is interested. Please just encourage them to take the survey, come chat with me, they can call me, they can write me letters, um, whatever's best way for them to provide their input on the process. Um, with that, I'll conclude my uh department report.
Thank you. Is there anybody going to give a report on the cycle to work day, which I think is coming up? I heard Qatari's being part of it, but.
We are hosting a Energizer station in La Plaza Park from seven AM to ten AM. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be, um, I'm going to be out of town that day. Uh, Ashley Wilson from our uh office will be manning that station.
Thank you very much. Any reports by commissioners? Hearing nobody jump in there, and I don't. I think we've done an amazing job this evening, plowing on for two and a half hours through all of this. So thank you very much for all um coming in and um I. Time to call this to a close unless, I guess, we've got, should I mention the items received after the agenda was posted? Is that?
I believe I I referred to all of them in my presentation, but they are there.
Okay, just on the agenda, um, there's the public comment letters, there's the letters from Congas, um. There was a letter from Laurie and I think from from public letter number two. Uh, Marson Whitman, from the owner of the Chevron Station. And um, so there was, was very good. Thank you very much to the public as well. Bring this meeting to a close of the planning commission at twenty thirty one. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.